I was just joking before the moderator gets here. I just wanted to see if my mic worked. And it does. Are you guys ready? All right. Let me stop talking before I get kicked out of here.
All right, is this on? Hello, everybody, and welcome to the Boston City Council at-large candidate forum. Yay! So this event is co-hosted by BU College Democrats and the Initiative on Cities, and funded in part by BU Student Government. And of course, we have to thank the Faculty Center for Computing and Data Sciences for giving us this beautiful space and this wonderful building. And yeah, my name is Sean Waddington. I'm president of BU College Democrats. Thank you, thank you. And I also have the privilege of working as an office assistant at the Initiative on Cities. And then I'll let my co-moderator introduce himself.
Hi, everyone. My name is Drew Kapadia. I'm the student body president here at Boston University. Outside of my classes and work, I also do serve as an implementation coordinator for Mayor Wu's newly established Planning Advisory Council at City Hall. So I spend my Tuesdays every day commuting down to government center. So it's very fun. And I do want to take a second to really thank Sean for putting this together. If it wasn't for him and the College Demz Board, this event wouldn't be possible. So great job to you guys. And yeah, we can get into it.
All right, first, let me just give a quick introduction to our candidates, who will then introduce themselves. But we have Councillor Julia Mejia. We have Councillor Erin Murphy. We have Henry Santana, who's the inaugural director for Michelle Wu's Office of Civic Organizing. And then we have Councillor Rusi Louis-Jean. All right.
So I just want to give some quick ground rules for this upcoming forum. Each candidate will deliver an opening statement roughly one minute long. After opening statements, myself and Sean will ask a couple of questions that we've put together just relating to a variety of issues facing the city of Boston. Given time limitations that we have tonight, each candidate will have two minutes to share their responses. Alice, where's Alice? Alice, right here. Alice will signal when there's one minute left and when there's 15 seconds left, just so we know where we are at the time. And we will also be having a question-answer portion after the questions are asked.
Okay. Welcome candidates. Why don't we start by introducing yourselves and giving your opening statements? So let's start with Councillor Louis-Jean and then move to the right.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Apologies for being slightly late. Yeah, one thing you'll learn is that as an at-large councillor, you're bouncing around a lot. So I'm so happy to be here. I'm an at-large city councillor in my first term, running for reelection. I'm a daughter of the city, grew up in Mattapan and High Park. Two Haitian immigrants who, and I have three sisters, all of us who went through the Boston Public Schools. So I've seen the good, the bad, and the ugly of what we do and don't offer our kids. I started my career as a student attorney when I was a student at Harvard Law School with the Harvard Legal Aid Bureau, representing families facing eviction and foreclosure. And that really is the foundation of the work that I'm doing today. As an at-large city councillor, issues I care about are issues of housing, education, diversity in our workforce, especially in our trades, and making sure that we are addressing both the small and big issues so that we are leaving no one behind and making sure that we are doing the work of equity, which is correcting for our past harms through policy. Thank you so much for being here and for having me tonight.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Henry Santana, and I'm a candidate for Boston City Council at-large. I just want to thank the organizers putting this forum together, and thank you all for being here and taking some time on your Tuesday to be here. So yeah, my name is Henry Santana. I was born Dominican Republic, product of public housing, grew up in Mission Hill, Alice Taylor BHA Apartments, and have dedicated my life to public service. I'm a BPS kid, I'm a Boston kid. I'm a true example of what happens when the city truly invests in its youth. I've been able to work in city government for former councillor Kenzie Balken, District 8, and then joined the historical Mayor Wu's administration as their Director of Civic Organizing, where, you know, I really worked on identifying different barriers that people had with interacting with city government. And my office was in charge of creating programs and initiatives to break down those barriers. I'm now running to be your next Boston City Council at-large to really be representative of the next generation that's coming. So I'm really glad to be here with you all, with young people who are civically engaged and ready to learn. So, you know, I'm looking forward to your questions and thank you for having me.
Thank you. Thank you, Henry. Hi, everyone. I'm Erin Murphy. I'm one of your four at-large city councillors. Born and raised in Dorchester, I am a former BPS student, BPS parent, and a BPS teacher for over 20 years before I decided to switch lanes in my career and ran for at-large city councillor. So raising my family, I'm a single mom, a renter in the city of Dorchester, and know firsthand the struggles that many of our families have across the city and all of the neighborhoods. As you probably all know, at-large, there's four at-large city councillors. There's nine districts across the city, but as we represent the whole city. So one of the things I really like, I was in East Boston earlier, came over here, is that we, there's a lot we have in common, but then there's also very different needs. And college students here on Comm Ave, you have very specific needs. So one thing I do pride myself in doing and making sure our office does is show up in every neighborhood, listen to the concerns of the residents, and really lift up your voices. Because if I don't show up and if I don't listen, I don't really know what you need from city government. So thank you for having me. My two youngest, if all of you know about college, they're about to start paying back their student loans. They're a couple of years out of college now, so I have young adults. So love that you're civically engaged, showing up, and looking forward to your questions. So thank you very much.
Hello, good evening, everyone. I am councillor at-large, Julia Mejia. I won by one vote in 2019. So if you think your vote does not matter, think again. I am the poster child for that story. I actually covered the presidential elections with MTV in 2000, way before you were even born, just so you know. And 20-something years ago, I traveled the entire country trying to get young people to recognize the power of their vote. And time and time and time again, I heard that their vote did not matter. So here I am on the city council. I'm the first person in my family to graduate high school, college. I bought a house, got my mom out of Section 8. And I consider myself the little Chihuahua on the city council because I am fierce in terms of barking and fighting for the things that I want. And I just don't fight for the sake of fighting. I've already passed 13 pieces of legislation in three and a half years, and I've learned my job while doing it publicly. Happy to be here, thank you.
Thank you for those introductions. Now, we're going to enter our crafted questions we have for y'all. So our first one, Boston, as we know, is a home to many institutions of higher education and hundreds of thousands of college-age students. What role do you see the city council playing in college life and ensuring the well-being of our city's college students?
Thank you for that question. When I was chatting with a few people earlier before this started, I met a few of you, and some of you live in the city, but many of you are new to the state of Massachusetts, like Tennessee. And you come from all over the world to go to school at our great colleges. So one thing I would want to make sure that you know that this city is welcoming, but you have to understand how do you access? Because when you, you're a resident once you're a college student here. If you're living on campus, if it's BU, I heard there's Northeastern students here also, that you have to know that the city is here to work for you also. So to make sure you know how to get the services City Hall delivers, and that meaning safe streets, lights, parking, whatever it is you need. So that what I advocate and when I'm fighting for needs in a certain neighborhood or district, if you live there, if you're renting, or if you're on campus here, know that your voice matters too, and your needs need to be uplifted at City Hall.
Great. Hello? All right, there it works. You know, I mentioned I'm a product of public housing. I grew up in Mission Hill. Mission Hill, for those who don't know, is surrounded by some, you know, Northeastern, Wentworth, Mass, art. So, you know, growing up, I had college students living in my neighborhood. And, you know, my family still currently resides there. Like Councillor Murphy, definitely, you know, want to agree that, you know, getting integrated with city government is a big part. But, you know, as someone who grew up in the community, I also want to make sure that, you know, you guys are integrating into the community, understanding the needs of the residents who are already living there, you know, some who have lived there for decades, and building that relationship. And as someone, again, who grew up, you know, in community in Mission Hill, around college students, I know the value that you all bring into the neighborhood. And I want to make sure that that's, you know, distributed across the neighborhood. So that's something I'm really focused on.
What I'll say is, this is one really great way, right? We are your city councillors, invite us to your campuses. We are here to work for you and to make sure that this is a city that attracts all the incredible talent that you all bring to BU. I'm not sure if y'all have heard of this, but Boston is a city of meds and eds. We have a stable economy in this city because of y'all, right? Our hospitals, our institutions of higher education, that's what makes this city work. That's, and so we are benefiting, we are a stronger city because of all of you. And so how do we make sure that we are responding to your needs and responding to the needs of our long-term residents? One of the things that I worked on with a city councillor, Gigi Colletta, was working on the issue of contaminated drinks. I care deeply about making sure that Boston is a fun city. And we have a lot of college students who are in this city. But oftentimes, when folks are going out at night, we want to make sure that everyone feels safe at the bar. And there, you know, we've seen more incidences than we would like of spiked drinks. So working in partnership with the city, with the Boston Police Department, with BU, BU was actually really engaged in that conversation. But let us know if they're not doing enough. Because we work in partnership with all of your schools to make your experience here great and to make Boston the vibrant, effective, inclusive, and equitable city that we want it to be.
Yeah, I'll just add really quick, is one of my mantras everywhere that I go is that nothing about us without us is for us, right? And if you really lean into that, recognizing that your voice and the decisions that we make every day impact your life. And you don't have a voice if you're not showing up to our public hearings, if you're not reaching out to your city councillors. Hold us accountable, whether you are registered to vote here or not, I work for you, right? And that level of understanding what your power is changes the game. And I think what happens is that here in the city of Boston in particular, having grown up here, I suffer from a syndrome of a chip on my shoulder, right? Because I didn't go to the best high school. So when I ended up going to college, I struggled, right? And there are a lot of amazing institutions here that are not paying their fair share of, they're called payment in lieu of taxes, right? Pilot in the city of Boston. And so what happens is a lot of universities are occupying space, but what they're offering are maybe a scholarship here or a scholarship there, but they're not doing their part in really helping to build a pipeline so our Boston Public School students can also occupy space here. So as college students, I'm going to encourage you to take on that fight, right? And to create opportunities for us to coexist in a city that we can all share, right? So that people don't feel like they don't belong here. And so that you don't feel like you don't belong here, right? Because this is what happens here in the city of Boston. Having grown up here, I know how difficult it is. Because I moved to New York, I came back 10 years later, and people were like, "Where you from?" I'm like, "I'm from here." I'm like, "They didn't even think I was from here, and I left for 10 years." So there's this outsider syndrome that exists here in the city of Boston. And you, as college students, need to recognize that you belong, and you should be occupying space, and you should be holding your city councillors accountable. And not just city councillors, just state reps too.
And yeah, thank you so much. So next question. College students and recent grads are hard-pressed to find affordable housing, as are many Boston residents. What are your plans to make Boston a more affordable city while also understanding, to point some of the councils I've brought up, of not gentrifying neighborhoods and displacing Bostonians that are already here?
I'll go, thank you. So my two youngest children, Michael will be 24 tomorrow, so 24 and 25, feel like they'll be the first generation in my family who may not be able to stay here in the city of Boston because it's so expensive. And it's really frustrating. And I know that, you know, they went to college, they have good jobs. My daughter's a Boston Public School teacher, my son works at EverSource. When I'm 53, right, so back when I was their age, if I had, you know, those resources, I would definitely be buying a home in any neighborhood I wanted, and it wouldn't be something that was taking up all of my money. So it really is sad to me to see that we're losing so many families. And, I mean, we need to produce, right? We need more housing stock, but we also need to be considerate about preserving. I just came from East Boston, and there was a meeting the other night in Childstown about Planned Childstown, and we were talking earlier about Planned Mattapan, that we have to have the voices of the neighborhoods also making sure that your voices are being heard, because people don't want the fabric of their neighborhoods to completely change. But at the same time, we have to be building, so it's that balance between building more so the prices can come down. But it's something that we have to all put our heads together and work on because, and also, I don't want to leave out our seniors, right? A lot of our older generations are being gentrified right out of neighborhoods. A house next to my mom sold for like 1.2 million, and everyone's like, "That's great." She's like, "No, it's not. My taxes just went up, and I don't plan on moving, but I'm on a fixed income, so really, it's not." So it's a concern for, and I know it's something that we on the council have really been advocating. We put a lot of our opera funding into affordable housing, and there's not one person on the current council that is not in favor of making sure that we're making the city of Boston more affordable.
Yeah, so, you know, I'll just start with basically, for me, a lot of these conversations are personal. Like, I didn't have my own room until I was in the fifth grade. And I always shared spaces with multiple families, right? And I was never in one school long enough to make friends. And that was years ago, and the housing situation has not changed here in the city of Boston. My mom lived in a triple-decker and had a Section 8 voucher. And the person who bought the home raised the rent to the point that my mom was not even, even with that, was going to be able to stay. And so I told my mom, I said, "Listen, I'm gonna buy you a house." At the time, I didn't even know what my credit score was. That was not too long ago, I should be embarrassed by that, but nonetheless. I had to take out my entire 401K to be able to buy a house. And my brother and I share one side with our kids, and my mom has the other. That was the only way we were able to stay here in the city of Boston. And that's not the case for a lot of people right now, who are still struggling to make their own ends meet to stay here. I think, and because I'm not a politician, even though I'm an elected official, I'm a public servant, so I have a very different way of how I move. And I think that we spend a lot of time with beautiful language that really doesn't have the substance that we need. And what I'm looking for is innovation. There are a lot of elders who are living right now in two-family homes. We could be more creative about creating stock that already exists, that supports an intergenerational type of environment, right? Like, how can we be more impactful about existing stock? I'm also pushing for a higher percent on the IDP. Right now, that's the inclusionary development. It's 13%. I'm pushing for 50%. People are trying to get at 20, but I think that what we need to do is be bolder and be more aggressive about meeting this moment. Because otherwise, we're just displacing people. And I think we should also look at a displacement tax. You are responsible for displacing people, then you should be responsible for paying for that, period.
So some solutions that I think could be helpful. It's funny, because we were talking about, I actually didn't have my own bedroom till I was in college. I did not have my own bed till I got to college. It's like, oh, this is what it's like. But I will say that you all are students. And so think about what is the role of your colleges and institutions in helping us with this affordable housing crisis? There is a role. Your institutional master plans, challenge your institutions, whether it's BU, Northeastern, or Harvard. How much, what does your institutional master plan do to address housing for students? So many of our families in the city, in neighborhoods like where Henry's family lives and grows up, Mission Hill, a lot of multi-general housing. Places where three fam, if you need three bedrooms, four bedrooms, but you know part of the problem is that three, four bedrooms, a lot of the students who come will take, and they'll have three roommates, and they'll take those three- and four-bedroom apartments. That families need, right? Because you have children, you have needs, and, you know, you get three roommates, you could pay $4,000, let's say, for that. What family in Boston right now can pay $4,000 for a three- or four-bedroom? A working-class family, it just doesn't exist. And so I will, part of that question has to do with us holding ourselves accountable and the institutions that we are a part of. Harvard, 60% of Harvard's land, even though everyone associates them Cambridge, 60% of Harvard's land holdings are in Austin, in Boston, okay? And so what is Harvard's role in making sure that they are building housing for students so that families, and that will free up these triple-deckers, these three families that are traditionally held by families, so that it's not creating this environment where we're competing with each other, where we're coexisting, because we have institutions that have private endowments that are more than the GDPs of most countries? When you look at BU's endowment and how much it grew during the pandemic, what's its responsibility to all of you to provide housing? And how does that help us as a city? Those are the questions we need to ask.
I definitely want to reinforce what the councillor just said, and the role that, you know, our universities and our colleges play. I also, again, I'm a product of public housing, right? Housing, to me, is a human right. And because of that, you know, public housing is a public good here in the city of Boston. I'm looking, you know, as someone who grew up in public housing, how do we create more units across the city of public housing? How do we fix up the current infrastructure that we currently have across the city of Boston? And then, you know, when we're looking at the wealth gap here in the city of Boston, right? That goes a lot to do with homeownership. How do we create more opportunities for people who come straight from public housing straight to homeownership? That's what I'm focused on, that's been my lived experience, and that's what, you know, I'll be delivering if I'm elected to the city council.
Now, moving over to climate change. As we know, climate change is a pressing issue to all of us, but particularly our marginalized communities here in Boston. So what is your record on climate policy? And what is your view on a climate-resilient Boston?
All right. I'm gonna go first. Because this question is always something that I find really interesting, and I'm so glad that you brought in the lived, the voices of marginalized communities. And I'd like to challenge that and say we are resilient communities because we have overcome so much. So there's nothing minor about us, there's nothing. We are resilient people. So I would encourage you all, when you talk about people of color and low income, we're resilient people. So I want to name that. But the first time someone asked me a question around climate, it was in the 2019 election that I ran, where I won by one vote, which is probably why I won by one vote, y'all, because they asked me had I read a report, a 2030 report on climate, and it was like 13,000 pages deep. I'm exaggerating, but it was a lot. And I'm a single mom, okay? And I grew up in a neighborhood where we are constantly, and still to this day, dodging bullets, right? And so it felt like the question was coming from me from a place of privilege. And so I had to start thinking about what role I could play in this conversation so I can change it. So my answer was, and this is something that I always say, is that we have to help people understand how climate justice issues impact their daily lives. And we can't get people excited until they understand that. So at the basic core, it's helping people understand the correlation, right? Even with violence, people want to ride bikes. The fact of the matter is, is that if you want to talk about riding bikes in the city of Boston, you have to address the violence because people don't feel safe riding their bikes. So all of these questions have to be layered and interconnected with all of the issues that low-income communities are struggling with. And one of the things that I've been doing with small businesses, immigrant-owned small businesses, is helping them when their, you know, their businesses get flooded, is helping them understand how climate impacts them. That little bit of work, working with these barber shops and hair salons while they're blowing out somebody's hair, they're talking about climate justice issues. That's how you do it. You think about the work differently, and that's how you get people excited about it, excuse me.
Yeah, so, you know, I, again, I keep going back to my lived experience. I grew up in Mission Hill, and Mission Hill actually has one of the highest asthma rates across the city. And, you know, when, growing up there, again, we have some of the, if not the best hospital in the world, in the United States, right? And some of the best colleges, and it didn't make sense to me. I had neighbors, you know, friends in my community who struggle with asthma. So again, I take this very personal. You know, when I'm thinking about, you know, activating green spaces in our neighborhood, that was a critical role that I played as the former Director of Civic Organizing for the city of Boston. I was working with community leaders across the city of Boston to make sure that we were cleaning up our neighborhoods, that we were activating green spaces, that, you know, that people knew about these green spaces, that our young kids knew about, you know, our public parks, and, you know, how do we keep them clean to make sure that people kept coming back? You know, and then at a larger scale, you know, really want to be able to, you know, work with, you know, with my colleagues here, if I'm lucky, and then with the administration, to really, you know, really build a green workforce across the city. Really work on a green, you know, Boston School New Deal that really, you know, centers around climate resiliency. So I'm very, you know, I'm very supportive of the city efforts to, of our climate efforts to reach by 2030. And, you know, I'm just happy, again, with, you know, just my lived experience, being able to really share that as someone who grew up the way I did on the city council and at our scale.
And thank you, Henry, because I know I was out at a few parks when you were in that role, and it's important because we have a lot of green spaces in the city of Boston, but depending on what neighborhood you're in, some neighborhoods, they're being used more. If you're at like Millennial Park in West Roxbury, it's hard to find a parking spot, and there'll be hundreds of families on Sunday morning at soccer. And if you're at Clifford Park in Roxbury, they're struggling to keep it clean and make sure there are families in schools that are around there who don't have, like, the Mason School does not have a playground, but they use that park, but many times, the teachers and families don't feel safe because there's needles and issues that we have to address. So to make sure that our open spaces are equitable, the ones we have, right? It's about making sure people feel safe, like Councillor Mejia was mentioning. Talk a lot when we're at community meetings in Mattapan and other places, like, they want lights at Almon Park, they want to be able to go to Franklin Park at night and feel safe. So making sure that families and residents of all ages and dog owners, one of the things through our participatory budgeting, I found out that there is a, I'm a dog owner, dog lover myself, but wanting more dog parks and being able to come to some agreement with our fields that we use for like youth sports, which I'm a huge advocate for. So on that side, we just have to make sure that we're keeping our open spaces equitable for everyone. I live in Dorchester and up and down Morrissey Boulevard for my whole life, but even more. So now it gets scary where it shuts down because it floods. So climate change is so many different levels. We talk about advocating on the council too for the trash pickup in Chinatown because Chinatown has a very high rate of asthma, and it's tied to some of the pollution that's there. So really making sure that we're working alongside the departments. I'm fortunate that Mayor Wu and her administration is 100% behind making sure that we move this needle forward. And as a Boston Public School teacher, I will say, many of my years, I would be cleaning out the vent myself, or the windows would be, you know, nailed shut. So it was hard to ventilation for our students and the staff. So it's going to cost a lot of money, but it's absolutely worth it that we're investing in making sure that our buildings are safe for our young children, but also our senior centers and community centers, that we should be really making sure we continue to invest and have no pushback. So those are some, there's always a lot more to talk about, but thank you for the question.
I'm gonna thank all of you, because when we really think about climate change and we really think about the movement of climate change, it's young people. It's young people who are telling us that our planet is under attack, and it's under attack because of the untenable level of CO2 that's in the air, because of man-made problems that have really exacerbated pollution throughout the world and concentrated too often in low-income communities. So it is all about how are we disinvesting and divesting from fossil fuel investments? How are we making sure that we are electrifying our school bus fleet? When we talk about schools and areas and neighborhoods that have high rates of asthma, well, think about the pollution that comes from buses that are going up and down the street, that are controlled by the city and that are controlled by the state. You get those buses to be electric buses, you help deal with the asthma issue, right? You realize that climate justice is transit justice, is racial justice. And so when we are fighting for better transit, when we are fighting for a better MBTA that's about getting more people on public transit and off and out of cars, that has to be part, that has to be part of the solution. It has to be part of the solution. And it's not saying that everyone is going to be riding a bike because we know that there are people who have needs, that have to pick up their kids, who have to go to a hospital. But how are we making our streets multimodal? But how are we making our streets multimodal, right? How are we having spaces where people can drive their cars? And we have emergency lanes for our emergency vehicles? We have bikes and we have scooters? I am a scootler, you will see me on my scooter, okay? I have my own scooter that my family bought me two years ago. All of that is really important as we think about these really heavy and weighty climate justice issues that are about individual action, but more so about our collective action and how we express that. Our collective action via government and the collective responsibility of corporations who have too often made climate change be about, well, we need to recycle more. No, no, that's not the solution only. The solution is what are you doing as a corporation to help us mitigate these climate issues that many corporations have created?
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. And that was actually a pretty good segue to our next question. Student activism on Boston's campuses is strong. Here at BU, we campaigned for the divestment of our endowment from firearms. However, the university refused. We campaigned for the renaming of 610 Beacon Street, named after a colonizer, to be renamed in the honor of the tribe that he committed genocide against. The university refused. What do you say to students who are trying to bring progressive change to campuses but are facing a reluctant administration and an institution unwilling to change?
I'm like, I'll say, Henry, you can go first. But don't give up. I'll make sure if I don't say that when I talk. Never give up.
So no, this is a great question. I'm really glad that you bring it up. You know, even before addressing, I mean, I, again, I am a young candidate in this race, right? When I was in high school, I was president of my class. I was student government president and class president. In college, my senior year, I was class president. And, you know, I was among these fights, right? Trying to fight an institution with, you know, old principles and values and trying to really advocate against an institution. So I've lived it. I've been there. I'm very close to you in age. And, you know, I think like Counselor Murphy just said, like, just keep fighting, right? You gotta keep fighting. You know, because of the fight that you're putting in today, even though it doesn't, it can feel like it's a failure, that, you know, future generations, next year, people who are coming in will continue that fight. And that's what will really get it done. You know, as someone, again, who's been in those shoes, you know, there's power behind people. So make sure that you are, you know, reaching out to your neighbors, reaching out to your roommates, to your classmates, and really bringing them along that fight. And, you know, also reach out to your elected officials. Reach out to, you know, your city government. You know, again, as someone said, we work for you. You guys are residents of here and we want to be able to really join you in that fight.
I would say, like, when one door closes, it's like that just wasn't your path. It doesn't mean there aren't other ways to continue the fight that you've started. I often tell the story about how my grandfather, who was a custodian at MIT and came here from Ireland, didn't have anything, five children, they got evicted from Sedan Street in Savin Hill and were living then on, with six other family members on the second floor of a three-family on Houghton Street, which right behind it was the Victory Road Park. But it was never a park back then. In the 60s, it was a dumping ground and also where a lot of the trucks parked. And he was the president of the Pope's Hill Neighborhood Association. And he knew when they kept trying to advocate to do something with that space and they were being shot down, that he had to get creative. And so he decided to join with other neighborhood groups around his Pope's Hill Neighborhood Association. And he formed what is JUNA, which is still around. And this was in the 60s. It was when Mayor Kevin White was building community centers attached to schools. And he advocated to, and when they joined forces and their voices were louder and they were persistent, they ended up building the school with a community center, a baseball field, a basketball court, and a playground. And they named it after him, the Richard J. Murphy School, which I was in the first kindergarten class in 1974. And then come full circle after, in my path through college, which I didn't mention earlier, but graduated high school in '88, but I did not graduate college till I was 29. I was pregnant with my youngest, my fourth child, Michael, at that point. But I became a Boston public school teacher and was a kindergarten teacher in the same classroom I started at the Richard J. Murphy School. So it was something I always remember that when you feel as though people aren't listening to you, and I will end it, I see my timer here. But my slogan, because when you're in politics, I guess you have to have slogans. When I first ran, it was "A Voice Boston Deserves." And when I talked to people about it, I said, "I want to," like I was as a teacher and especially a coordinator for families in Boston, that when I get to City Hall, I'm going to lift up your voices and I want you all to know, even if you feel. Because many times in my life, I felt like people didn't want to listen to me, that my voice didn't matter. But I didn't give up. And it was a role model for my own children, but also my students, that you will have the door slammed in your face many times in life. But if it's something you're very passionate about and you care, just know that you're smarter than them and you'll just find ways. And if it's making connections and making, you know, and maybe sometimes it's something you never thought of, but just don't give up and lean on your neighbors and your friends to get to an end result. So thank you.
I would say to really, one of the things you can do is really harness the power of your alumni network and think about, right? So if you're working on divestment from the gun lobby, which I think was what you, right, divestment from the gun lobby, there are, I'm sure that there are BU alumni who are working in the space of gun advocacy at the various organizations that exist. Tap into them, say, "Look, this is what we're trying to do. We're trying to get BU to divest." Talk to students at other schools that have been successful from other divestment movements because I think, you know, there is power in sort of understanding how other people have been able to do it. I remember I graduated from Harvard Law School in 2014. And you would have never told me that it would have been possible to change the crest of Harvard Law School that had wheat bushels on it from the royal family. The royal family is a royal family, their last name is Royal, right? There's not that a royal family from London. But it's like royal family are the ones that, their land is what was granted to build Harvard Law School. And on the crest was bushels of wheat that was the basis of the wealth of the royal family. But how did they get those, who was harvesting those bushels of wheat? Black people, enslaved black people. And so there was a movement and a student movement to get those bushels of wheat removed from the crest of Harvard Law School. And when I was a student, I never thought that would have been possible. And three years later, they were gone. So movements and change can happen. It takes collective action. It takes commitment and it takes persistence. But now only has the crest, the wheat's been removed from the crest, there is a plaque on the campus that states that Harvard Law School's wealth has been built, was built on the backs of slavery. And that was all via students. And so you pay this institution so much money from tuition, either of your scholarships or whatever. I was a scholarship kid, but that's still money that they get because of your presence. Hold them accountable. And use your alumni and your networks to make that possible.
Yeah, I know. I love, you know, I have what I call an imposter syndrome. So every time I come here, I'm like, oh, my God, I hate these debates. They always make me feel inferior. But every time I come and I do this and I show up, I'm like, wow, I'm dope because I belong in these spaces and places, right? And the reason why I say that, right, is because what happens to us is that we leave ourselves at the door to make other people feel comfortable, right? And what I always try to challenge myself to do is I try to never water myself down so I could be digestible. Because my belief is if they don't like me, let them choke. As an organizer first, right? My job is to amplify. I am no one's voice. I am your microphone. And so if you look at your role as someone who is convening people and creating space for people to speak for themselves, then they'll get excited about what it is that you're working on. But if you walk in with an agenda, which most people do, they're not going to feel invested in that process. So you have to start with the basics, right? I'll say this. The first time I had to stand up for someone, I was nine years old. And it was at the welfare office with my mom. And I had to let the case manager know about herself. I was translating for my mom. And we were there to receive services. And the case manager was being so incredibly mean. And I was only nine years old, but you can feel people's energy, right? So I took a stand. I only told my mom what she needed to know. But when it was my turn to translate for my mom, I let that case manager know about herself. I said, "My mom said you were being mean." My mom never said any of that. But I said it. Because even when your voice quivers, you have to speak truth. Because speaking truth to power is the most courageous thing that you can ever do. And what they expect you to do is to be tamed, to be submissive, to be in line. But you know what? We don't have any more time to hope and pray that people are going to do right by whatever cause it is that you're fighting for. You have to rage against the machine and be unapologetic about it, y'all. Because disrespectability politics is cute, but that's never going to move the needle. And so this is where the moment is. It is about being impatient because we can't wait anymore. And so that is the level of raging that we need more of, right? And what I've had to learn on the city council, right? And I'm taking a little bit more time and I'm sorry, but let me just flow here real quick, is that I walked into a space that I had to fight to get into because I only won by one vote. And I've stood in that space because I always say, only the people who put me in are the ones that can take me out. Because I don't owe anyone any political favors. But the problem is, is that people of color in particular don't vote. And that's how they get away with their shenanigans. That's how they get away with ignoring you and the things that you care about. Because young people, right, are often seen as unengaged. And what you need to do is flip that script. Register to vote, even if you don't care. Put your own damn name on that ballot, but don't leave it blank. Because that's what they expect you to do and that's how they get over on you. So here at BU, you are a customer. You pay for their salary. You need to remind them that every so often. And if you have to walk out, walk out. That's how you hold people accountable. As loud as you can be, this is what these times require.
We have time for one more question. Just building off on the previous notion of student activism. Across Boston-area universities in the last few years, unions have been growing to protect graduate workers and RAs. Here at Boston University, our grad workers and RAs unionized last year. And even at Tufts, I believe last week, the RA union reached a contractual agreement with their administration. So this question is in two parts. Firstly, do you support the unionization of graduate workers and RAs on campus? And what will you do to support these unionization efforts in all Boston-area schools?
So I absolutely support unionization efforts. I passed a resolution on the city council with two of my colleagues from supporting the organizing of RAs at Tufts. And we are supporting grad worker organizing through resolutions as well and through being present on campuses here at BU, at Harvard, at Northeastern, and wherever grads, workers find themselves. Grad school workers are workers. And Boston is a union town, right? When we think about all of these issues being intersectional, it is really important that we are fighting for a living wage for everyone, that one job is enough for everyone. And one of the beautiful things, when you're fighting for union representation of RAs or when you're fighting for union representation of grad workers, is the solidarity in the labor movement and standing in that gap where there's overreach or corporate greed to make sure that people are being paid a living wage and that their rights are being protected and aren't being overworked, right? All work has dignity. And so I've come on this campus before in support of grad workers. And I've seen members of 32BJ and the janitors show up and the custodians. And you see members of Local 26 from the dining service workers that my cousins and family are a part of, all come and support. And that's the work that we need to do. Unions have really helped build this country and helps protect workers. And I think that that's in every instance we need to do that, including our grad school workers.
All right. Two minutes, don't worry this time. So yes, totally on board. My mom, right now, is 74 years old and still too poor to retire. And she works at Babson as a food handler and has been there for the last 20-something years. And so when we talk about unions, we talk about really creating a pathway for people to be able to live their lives at the end of their lives, right? So the fact that my mom is 74 years old and still can't retire speaks volumes to what would have been different if United 26 was able to successfully get her and her colleagues unionized. But they were too afraid. You get bullied if you're trying to take a stand, right? So that's what happened to my mom many years ago. I used to be an RA. I had to work three jobs. I went to Mount Ida College. Probably nobody's ever heard of it, but it was like, you know, whatever. That's where I went to, I graduated. That's all that matters. But I was working as an RA. I drove the shuttle, right? That was my, I had a work-study job. And I worked at Tom and Ken Shoe Store during the Christmas breaks. I still had to work four jobs, right? During Christmas break and three jobs during school to be able to stay in school. And so when we're talking about unions and we're talking about creating opportunities, how can you study with three or four jobs juggling school? Of course, I'm going to support unionizing RAs because it shouldn't be slave wages, which is what they get away with every single day, right? So to my colleague's point, yes, Boston is a union city. But I think that we need to really display that and be more vocal about that across all different types of sectors, right? We can't give institutions like this a pass without holding them accountable. And so I'm here for it. And if you need me to stand at a picket line, I'll be the first to show up. So just come me in on that fight.
Absolutely in favor. I am the daughter of union workers and a union worker myself as a BTU teacher, BPS teacher for 24 years. I often say, as a single mom raising my four children in the apartment I rent, that rent keeps going up. If I wasn't a union worker, if I wasn't able to know that I had health care for my kids, I had days off when my kids were sick and that I was able to provide for them and know that what my salary was going to be and I had job security, that I probably wouldn't still be here in the city. So absolutely a product of what unions do for our working middle class and making sure that everyone has that ability to form a union, 100% in favor. No one should ever be stopped from forming a union. No one should be afraid of that. So absolutely want to make sure that when, and we can pass resolutions on the council floor, but I think it's important to bring it here to joining the picket lines, but also making sure we're uplifting your voices. And when you feel like you're being bullied or you're not being heard, like, how do we make sure that you continue that fight to organize? And I will say, you mentioned how you had many jobs in college. I didn't live at college. I went to UMass Boston. And as I mentioned, I was at home raising my young children. But I was 51, I was 51 when I paid off my student loans. Like, so I was working two jobs, raising my kids, trying to make sure I finished so I could move up from being a para in a classroom to a classroom teacher and have a salary where my children had a chance living here in the city and had opportunities that I wanted to offer them. So any opportunity that we can make, especially when we know how much our colleges have and to prioritize our workers is important. So unionizing is always something I will advocate for. So thank you.
Yes, I'm in agreement with all the incumbents here on stage. Absolutely, I will support, you know, and those efforts. You know, I often say, you know, as an immigrant who came from the Dominican Republic, my family understood at a young age that, you know, we chose Boston because it was a union city, right? We chose Boston because we know unions actually create, it's the easiest pathway for low-income people to go straight into the middle class. And as, you know, Counselor Mihia said, Boston is a union city. So absolutely, I 100% support it. And, you know, again, right now, you know, I also had multiple jobs in college. I'm currently just finished my first year at Suffolk as well, doing my MPA there and was working full-time for the mayor's administration there, right? And currently, right now, as a city councilor candidate, running at large, I had to resign from my position with Mayor Wu, you know, to really fully you know, to really fully commit to this. But the bill still kept coming, right? And all of that still kept coming. And I'm actually working overnight right now. I finished an overnight shift last night. I'm going overnight tonight to continue onto this fight, right? So I absolutely, you know, support that. And in terms of how I will show up, you know, picket line, obviously, I think that I will definitely show up. But I also wanna, you know, learn and connect with you all. You know, as I said, this is a new movement of, you know, what are other creative ways that we can really show up for you? And I'm really interested in just sitting down with you all and learning from you all on how best I can be an advocate for you all. So thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much, guys. So if you don't mind, we're gonna turn it to the floor. I don't know where the microphone went. Somewhere. Thomas? Oh! Shayna, can you grab that for me? It's about... Yeah, you got it, queen. All right. So who's... Yeah, perfect.
Thank you. My name is Victor. I am a undergrad at Harvard. I think it's no secret that Boston is a city of immigrants. We have an immigrant individual running who's on the stage right now. But I think it's also no secret that immigrant communities are often the ones that are least invested in. I think part of that certainly has something to do with the fact that non-citizens don't have access to the vote here in the city of Boston. So how do they hold their city council members and government officials accountable? And so my question to you is, where do you stand on noncitizen voting in the city of Boston? And how do you engage with noncitizen communities in the roles that you have had thus far?
Yes, I love that question. Because being an immigrant to this country and being raised by a mom who was undocumented, I understand how important it is to make sure that you're showing up for everyone whether they can vote or not. And I think it's really important for us to recognize... Okay, I had a little lapse here. That might... When somebody turned my mic off. That when... I support municipal voting for folks who are residents. Absolutely, 100%. Actually, my colleague, Councilor Lada, actually introduced that on the city council. And, you know, if God gives me another term, I would be carrying that to the finish, right? Because I really do believe that nothing about us, without us, is for us. And municipal residents are taxpayers, okay? They're paying taxes. So no taxation without representation, or representation, whatever it is that they say. Right now, the people are not being heard and there's no way to hold us accountable. So I definitely appreciate that effort. And I do believe that in terms of civic engagement, I have folks who are undocumented that still volunteer for my campaign. Just because you don't have your papers doesn't necessarily mean you do not have a voice. There is... We've been led to believe that we should not be participating in the democratic process. But that is the process that we need to be engaging in the most because decisions are being made about us, right? So you can phone back, you can door knock, you know, you can join a civic association. You could be on the parent council. You could be on the student council. There are so many ways to be heard. And supporting municipal voting for residents, I think, is definitely a way to do that. And I wanna take it one step further. I passed a home rule petition on the city council to lower the voting age for 16- to 17-year-olds. Because they believe that young people can't or don't have the right to vote. You're paying taxes. If you're paying taxes, you should be able to decide who represents you. And I think that that's what democracy looks like. And those are the sort of things that I'd like to push for and that I can to push for. And look, I have a 13-year-old who keeps blowing up my phone. She wants me to eat my taco. So that's what is happening here with my phone. But I will say that my 13-year-old is an activist already. And so if we really wanna change the way our society is, we have to start them young. And so that is also part of the process. I take my daughter to vote. She's engaged. So she's going to be, hopefully, a lifelong voter. And it takes us six years to turn a non-voter into a super voter. Six years, y'all. And so we have to build that muscle. And by giving people who are residents the right to vote, we give them not only a voice, but the dignity that they deserve.
So I support the right to vote for lawfully admitted permanent residents who are here. I think that I, you know, Lawyer and I have worked a lot in, like, democracy-building and in voting rights. And I think about everything we should be doing is like, how are we making our democracy stronger and bringing people into the democratic process? One of the flaws, though, I think, that exists with why we need to have, not allow for noncitizen voting is how our system does and doesn't respond to people. So I am the first Haitian-American on the Boston City Council. Boston has the third-largest Haitian diaspora in the entire country. And we are dealing with every day new arrivals into this country from a lot of countries in Latin America, Venezuela, Honduras, Haiti. Haiti is one of the big countries. And I spend a lot of my time, a lot of my time, working on issues that new arrivals are facing. Nope. And people are like, "You spend a lot of time, they don't vote." I don't care. They are my constituents because they are residents. And that is the framework that we need to dispel. And, you know, this is something that people don't talk about. But it's also... They call this the black tax, right? I don't know if folks have heard about it, but it's the tax that, you know, oftentimes, black folk have to pay as a result of additional work. So I wake up in the morning to new arrivals calling my phone. And I go to sleep at night to new arrivals calling my phone because they need access to resources. And for me, it doesn't matter that they vote or not. It's that they have a representative that they can speak to in Creole. That's the first work that my office did when we're talking about folks coming home from incarceration, right? These are... It's not a population of folks who are eager to go cast a ballot. But that doesn't mean that they're not meritorious of representation. And so we need to make sure that our systems are responding to people regardless of whether they vote or whether they don't vote. Because a lot of people who don't vote it's because they've been disaffected by our systems because of historic exclusion and marginalization. So yes, and we need to make our systems work for all of those who don't traditionally have access to power.
I would say, unfortunately, when you look at the percentage of voter turnout at elections, that 80% of the people who are eligible to vote don't show up. So to me, that has always been my concern. How do we engage people to wanna actually show up and vote? And what I'll say, like, when my phone rings early in the morning or our office, someone comes by our office and needs something or I'm at an event, a community event in any neighborhood across the city, I never ask them when they ask me for help, like, "Are you a legal resident? Like, are you documented? Are you registered to vote?" That's never even crosses my mind. I know that I represent all, anyone, everyone who's here in the city. And so to lift up their voices, it's never a question about, "Well, did you vote in the last election?" Or, "I'm not gonna call you back if you're not an engaged voter." So I think it's important that we get people to want to participate in the democracy of making sure that... And oftentimes, people think, obviously, Councilor Mejia will tell you your vote matters. But know that voting is not the only way to have your voice heard and to make sure that your needs are being listened to. You can always reach out to City Hall and the State House and any agency across this Commonwealth for services, if you're a resident or not, and to make sure that we're allowing everyone to have access to city services is important.
I appreciate this question. And again, this is a very personal one to me. Again, I'm an immigrant from the Dominican Republic. I was born in the Dominican Republic and came to Boston at the age of three. And, you know, spent most of my life being a permanent resident of the city, not being able to, you know, my right to vote. I wasn't able to vote for a majority of my life. And then when I went through the citizenship process, you know, if we have any immigrants in our space here tonight, we know how long, comprehensive, how expensive that process can be. And that's something, you know, that happened with me. I was actually very, you know, humbled and thankful that a few weeks ago, I was able to cast my first vote in the preliminary election. And thank you. And that was years and years and years, again, of a system that was not necessarily built for us, that is very comprehensive, and I should say again, very expensive. You know, as a former director of civic organizing, I came into that work with that lens, right? I knew that as someone who was serving and representing all neighborhoods across the city, that not everyone had the right to vote. You know, when we're thinking about people being civically engaged, people often think about voting and jury duty. And my job, you know, in building that was really, how do we create more opportunities for people to know that there's more to that than for being civically engaged? So I created the Civic Power Pledge for the city of Boston that really promotes that, you know, going to your local park is being civically engaged. Going to showing up to a neighborhood meeting is being civically engaged. Helping your senior neighbor during a snow emergency because they can't shovel up their driveway is being civically engaged. So I was making sure that I was activating that across the city. And, you know, that's something that I will definitely continue to do, you know, if elected to the city council.
Hi, I'm Leah. I'm an undergraduate here at BU. And I know you've been talking about this before, but I'm really concerned how, you know, we have like a big college town here, but yet these colleges are classified as nonprofits and don't have to pay taxes. So we have this pilot, like, payment in lieu of taxes, but we don't even pay that. So are you gonna change the status of universities to make them taxable? Because, yeah, we're... You know, we could build this huge building, but I agree that they should be contributing more. So how will you make sure universities are paying their taxes or, yeah, contributing to the city financially?
That's right. It's like child support. Where's my money at, right? Nah, seriously. I think that that is a really great question because it's one of the things that I discussed earlier on in terms of like, how do we... How institutions like BU and Harvard occupy space, but they're not paying their fair share. And they get a pass. And the city, historically, right? We've come out with a list of bad actors and we try to shame them in doing their fair share. So there is a coalition, right? And there is a committee on the city council that has been leaning into this work. And one of the things that we are looking at and trying to propose, right, is like the oversight. Because the people who are sometimes in these spaces are the people who have the most benefit, right? So decisions are not really being made with those who are going to be most impacted in terms of community benefits, right? So I think that we need to redefine what community benefits are because they get a pass at saying, you know, you get five scholarships and that's it. No, I want my money, okay? Like, for real. Like, you need to pay up or get out, right? But I don't think that no one really has the political courage to be that aggressive. And one of the things that I'm learning how to do, y'all, and you're learning and watching me do this so publicly, is I'm learning how to talk in a way that I will not scare people, right? Because sometimes people have a hard time hearing the truth. So then what you have to do is tone down how you speak and hopefully, they will hear you. But at the end of the day, Harvard, Northeastern, BU, you owe the city of Boston money and we need you to pay up. And we need you all as students here to advocate on our behalf and hold them accountable. We need you all involved in that process because there's just so much that we can do on the city council. So we need everyone engaged in that fight because we're not going to win it alone.
Thank you for the question. We've definitely had several hearings on the council these past, this past term on this. And also, something that you may not be aware of, it's not just our colleges. You may all know this. It's our nonprofits too, you know, like the Museum of Fine Arts and other nonprofits across the city. But it is voluntary, right? Because Menino was trying to get more tax dollars and it's a voluntary system. And many colleges do. So I do wanna make sure we acknowledge that a community benefit does have a financial value, right? And so we can argue if they give enough or not. And that's absolutely something that I feel is a responsibility mine to make sure that everyone is giving what they can what they can and what they should to give back to the city. But I know my daughter was, you know, played hockey in BPS and she used the Northeastern skating rink. Like, there's definitely, when I looked through the list of the benefits and the scholarships, our benefit individual people, which are okay, but making sure that we're looking at the community benefits and if we can ask for more, that's important. It's something developers do all the time. They are allowed to build something that maybe the neighborhood isn't all in favor of, but they come up with this list of community benefits to kind of appease people. But I do, it's important, it's not the only access we have, two dollars to make sure that we're running, you know, we are a rich city, we have a high bond rating. But it's important that our colleges and all of our nonprofits know that, you know, they can't just not give anything. But to think that a dollar amount is the only thing, I think is important to look on that list. And there is a good website the city has on all of the, you know, benefits that they do give and all of the organizations that are part of that program. So it might be something good to check out. I was amazed at some of the community benefits and amazed at some of the colleges that give nothing in a dollar amount, which was, you know, and others that almost give 100%. So it's a good site to check out.
Very good question. You know, I think, you know, I definitely want to be able to work, you know, with my colleagues if elected and with the different universities, you know, to really grow that relationship, but understand the needs on both sides and, you know, how do we get to that point? I think it was mentioned on the stage earlier, I'm really focused on housing, right? Making sure that university, and I think Councilor Jen alluded to this, making sure that universities are providing and building enough housing for their students and building housing across the city. But also, you know, talking about over enrollment, right? There's not, you know, if you build housing, you have on campus housing, but then you over enroll by X amount of, you know, you're still, you know, students are still gonna come out to the neighborhood. So there's a balance there. I'm really focused on that. Again, I reference back to my lived experience of growing up in Mission Hill, you know, with a lot of triple-decker housing that are being occupied right now by students. You know, that's really where my focus is. And I'm looking forward to, you know, having those other conversations in terms of, you know, how do we really apply pressure as a city, but also while maintaining a relationship with our universities to really, you know, address that issue.
This is a great question. So I will start off by saying, like, part of the issue is that Boston's revenue is so dependent on property taxes, right? More than two-thirds of our revenue in order of us to fund our schools, make sure that our parks are of quality, address the issues of climate justice, more than two-thirds of that is coming from property taxes. And so you get all these institutions that occupy significant space in the city that are tax exempt. It creates a revenue problem in the city of Boston. And layer on top of that, that Boston is limited in its authority in how we can raise revenue. And Boston is limited in what we can do. So for example, yesterday I was at the State House advocating so that we can get more liquor licenses in our neighborhoods and we can't just do that sucesponte on our own in the city of Boston. We have to go and ask Beacon Hill, our state house, can we do this? And whenever we want to add a new revenue source as a city, we have to go to Beacon Hill and say, is this permissible? And so we have to work with what we got. And one of the things that we got are these universities. These universities who own a lot of land in the city, who are not paying into the pilot program as it is outlined, right? The payment in lieu of taxes program. And so we have to refine that. And so earlier this year, Councilor Braden, who is the counselor for District Nine, who represents Austin and Brighton, obviously Harvard and Boston University and other institutions, it's a really big question for her. They were able, she successfully navigated with the administration and Cjab, it's this coalition for Just Austin and Brighton. And I was at the table when they were having these conversations and negotiations for Harvard to require on its new development 25% affordable housing, which is higher than the current, than what was required at the time, 13%. Pilot is all about how do we get more money so that these universities can be good neighbors? That's all we're asking for. How do we get universities to be good neighbors? And how do we define what a community benefit is? I believe that a community benefit should be a but for. There are things that you are, that you are not investing in, that you wouldn't be investing in but for this pilot requirement. So that's the work that we are trying to do is how do we define what a community benefit is and get buy-in from all the institutions to realize what that is.
All right. Thank you so much. I think we have time for like one more question. Oh, I don't know how to pick. I think in the back, his hand was up earlier, so I think we'll just go with. Sorry, guys. Go for it. We can do two. They can stay.
Okay. My question was, this year, Councilor Ricardo Arroyo introduced a proposal to ban NIP bottles, like the small alcohol bottles in the city of Boston because they are not recyclable, contribute to litter and contribute to negative health outcomes. Where do you stand on this issue?
So knowing that, it was a good one, right? It was a good hearing we had and I supported that, have that conversation. When things aren't recyclable and we see them piling up ash around our neighborhood, address it. So in that case, he felt like the ordinance was a way to make it like a rule, you know, a new law in the city that we ban them. I know there's also concern though, right? Anytime we put something forward, there's always the other side where it's saying that. Okay, but. That. But the liquor stores, right? Anytime something goes forward, there's always going to be a side, which I think is part of the conversation we're having about voting and your voices being heard, that there's always two sides to something, right? So hearing from the liquor store owners and the corner store owners, I felt like a lot of their revenue was coming from people going in. So you might buy a NIP, but then you're also maybe spending 20, $30. So trying to balance the pushback for the, you know, the litter in our parks and making sure we're caring about our environment, but also not putting any small businesses in a situation. And how do we come to some medium is important. And those are the conversations we have to come to the table and have conversations with each other, even if we don't always agree and have the same policy ideas. But it's important that we work together and talk through those and hear from. Another important part of, and the one great thing we have on the council is we can call experts and we can call administration and ask them these questions and get those answers to really come up with a real informed decision at the end of the day.
So I was just saying that before the city council, like, there are things that we don't have jurisdiction over. And so it was a hearing order and I think it was a really great one because small businesses really came out and also talked about how it would affect them. And so there's this organization called High Park Beautiful, which is in High Park, which is where I live, that really is supporting it because of, because of the literature, because of the littering that happens in communities. But it's also with respect to sort of what I was just saying in terms of, we have limited authority in terms of what we're able to do. But I think it's a, it's a good proposal, but one that you really did see people who supported a ban come out and you saw small business owners, many of them people of color who came out, who own liquor stores and who said that a ban on miniature bottles would really be, you know, would really hurt their bottom line. And as an at-large city councilor, one of the things is that you really do have to find a way to listen to everyone and take everyone's voice and opinions into account.
Yeah. So I always like to say, I'm like the elephant in the room, right? Like, I'm always gonna say what other people are not saying, but I think I should bring it into the space because what I heard out in these streets was that this was another attack on poor people. And I know that's not something that you all want to hear in this space because intention behind it was really around climate and was about beautification. But there was another set of voices that were adamantly opposed to this because they're already feeling like they were being gentrified out of their neighborhoods, right? Now they can't even afford to drink. I know that's not what you want to hear, but that's what I heard in these streets. And I think it's really important as policymakers that when we're, when we're thinking about things, that we really listen to all sides. And sometimes we may not want to hear it, but it's important to have that emotional intelligence and understand that other side is coming from. Because something that sounds really good could have an unintended consequence on some. Is it almost over? That's why the sound is coming in and out? Let me find out. Fix your system here, BU. But I think that it's really important as you all continue to navigate the world of politics, is that every single decision you make has to have a process in which you hear from everyone. Because only then are you going to be able to actually meet moments without alienating other people. Like, literally my phone was blowing up and maybe it's because I'm the one who, you know, I'm different, right? So I have a different relationship with the folks who are being impacted by the decisions that we make. And a lot of the calls that came to my office were from people saying, this is racial, this is an attack on people who are poor, and this is another way of getting us out. I mean, that was like where they went with it. And so I think there's something to be said about everything that we do. So, just keeping it a hundred.
I completely agree with what's being said on the table, up here on the stage. I won't take too much time. I think, you know, it sounds good. We have to understand the impacts that it has on the other end. And I'm committed to that. I'm committed to making sure that there's a process to any decision that is being, or any vote that's being taken by the city council that we're, you know, listening to all parties and then that we can, you know, elected officials, making an informed decision about, you know, again, it sounds really good, making sure that, you know, that we're taking care of our climate, but it has unintended consequences to some of our communities. And that's what I'm really focused on. Really focused on the process, making sure that people from different stakeholders are at the table and then that, you know, as elected officials, we can make an informed decision.
I wanted to say thank you for letting me ask this question. So I'm actually a Boston native. I'm from Rosendale. And both my parents own businesses in Roxbury, specifically in Dudley Square. So my question is surrounding mask and casts. And I pass needles on the way to work, on playgrounds. And Massachusetts is the number one, like, leader in the opioid epidemic. So I think my question is, how will you guys kind of combat drug abuse, drug violence in Boston? And, yeah. Thank you again.
Thank you for that question. And thank you just for sharing your personal view on this. I mean, I could talk for hours, days about mask and cast recovery. I'm a person in recovery, 13 and a half years myself. I'm, well, thank you. Also, I'm the chair of Public Health Mental Health Recovery. My first hearing order was to address the mental health crisis. And many people know, those suffering from substance use disorder are dual diagnoses, mental health issues almost always. Mask and casts. And I also had a loved one on Long Island in October of 2014 when the bridge closed, so know exactly what happened to many people who their road to recovery, if they were there in a detox or a holding and waiting to get a bed at like a sober home, that that was interrupted and many people didn't make it back to recovery. So the road to, if you're ready for recovery, is windy, it's bumpy, it's not easy. But mask and cast is a different situation, right? We have, I was just there this morning with Council President Flynn, and tent encampment, which has been growing for many years, and the street outreach team and the millions of dollars we are investing in that humanitarian crisis is important. But just to not take too much time and direct your specific question, is that it has, it's not just in that area. That's the epicenter. But we know that it's Andrew Square, it's Nubian Square, and it's even as far out as Rosendale. There's tent encampments like at Pope John Paul Park nearby. There's people, you know, there's needles at Dorchester Park. So we have to make sure that while we're focusing, because that's where all the cameras are and a lot of the attention is Atkinson Street, one block area, that there's also suffering across the city. And one thing I've always made sure I do is that very caring and know that we have to treat those suffering. But we also have to remember, and my job just as a human, but also as an elected official, is that we're not forgetting that there's neighbors in that area. There's neighbors who live in Nubian Square. There's neighbors in Andrew Square. I do walks, safety walks in Andrew Square. There's people who live down near Atkinson Street. There's schools, right, down there and there's business owners. So making sure that we're making, having all of the voices heard and that our decisions aren't just based on trying to fix one thing, but also making sure that the city is either putting more money if needed into the issue to make sure these neighborhoods. Because one thing that's been being said for a long time, and the South End neighborhood definitely voices this concern, is that we need to decentralize the service. So if we do start to actually decentralize and we're putting different services for recovery in all of the neighborhoods, then we're gonna see more, you're mentioning, right? And we can fix it. I'm not saying that that's a horrible thing, but we have to be prepared to make sure that we have street teams in all of the neighborhoods across the city and that it's not a, oh, we'll get to that and Nubian Square once we finish here. Or like Clifford Park has been something I, you know, we hear a lot about. But there's other parks. Clifford Park isn't the only park that has needles or people who are, you know, putting tents up. So it's something I'll continue to fight for and know that the business owners, like your parents, thank you, and the residents across the city, need to know that their voices matter too and that their needs are there. Amen.
I want to thank your parents for being business owners in the city of Boston. And in Nubian Square, I was talking to business owners in Nubian Square today, not about this issue, but it's really important that we support our small business owners. And I love that you're from Boston. I knew there was good energy and reason to have your question. But I'll just say that one of the issues that we are seeing is that people need longer time in treatment and more treatment beds. And that's the obligation, right? We get into a lot of jurisdictional issues, like what's in our purview, what's not within our purview. And the state has to commit a lot more money and resources to making sure that people are able to stay in treatment for longer periods of time. The city is using a housing-first model where we ensure that people have a place and a bed to sleep. And then we also make sure that they have all the resources they need so that they can get themselves on their feet. If you are, if you have a doctor appointment or if you have, you know, a visitation, if you're in a tent and if you're staying in a tent encampment, you're not likely to go see your doctor. But if you have a bed and a place to sleep at night, you're more likely to engage in services. And so we have to think about how are we housing people and how are we providing them with access and opportunity to treatment? I think the issue, something that we also need to be honest about is that addiction is a disease and it's one that is really hard to cure. And if there was one solution that could have solved the problem as policymakers, we would have, we would have solved it already. And so I think it's that level of honesty of saying like, look, we don't have all of the answers. This is a hard issue. And also, there are benefits and downsides to being the capital city. Where in Boston, we are a city, as I said, of meds and ads. A lot of the facilities are here, the methadone clinics, and you don't get cities and towns investing in their own homeless shelters or in their own clinics or own facilities. And so you have a deluge of it here in our city that manifests in masks and casts that we are trying to clean up, respecting the fact that a lot of people, business owners and residents are affected, right? And understanding that this is a humanitarian crisis. So how do we meet it with compassion, but also with solutions? Long Island closing down was a big, big hit. It had a lot of facilities that were necessary for recovery. So it's deep investment and also patience with ourselves. I know patience is something that's hard to ask for when you are living by it and experiencing it every day as a business owner. But acknowledging that these are really hard, intractable issues, that we're working on our best, that require all of these resources. And, you know, people are playing hot potato with the issue. But a lot of people can't play hot potato because they live there or their loved one is down there. And so we really do need to, you know, sit down at the table, figure out what we can agree on, figure out where we can have shelters, where we can have temporary housing and low threshold housing for folks and move forward that way.
I don't want that mic. It's not working. I'm sorry. But, so I think there are a number of things at play. So first, let me just start off with the fact that I had a cousin who overdosed, you know, on heroin many, 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 many years ago. But there was so much stigma in my family that we never acknowledged that. And I'm one of the few people that speaks the truth in that space around, we have to accept that, right? And so there's a lot of stigma when we're talking about addiction. The other piece is that you can't legislate people's behavior. And there is a belief that the city council or the mayor, that we have the answer. But we don't. We are a part of the solution. But you can't legislate what people do. And there is a false hope and belief that we have the power to make anyone do anything. And I'm here to tell you, no, that's not the case. But what we can do, right, is hold not just ourselves accountable, but the state. This has to be an all hands on deck situation. Because what we're doing is pointing fingers and no one's taking responsibility. What we're not looking at is also the doctors who are prescribing, right? What role do they play in driving this, right? And so we have to have the full picture if we're really going to tackle this issue. But thinking that there's going to be the magic bullet and that it's going to be the mayor, and let me just tell you, Mayor Wu walked into the city hall as a woman of color and made some drastic, bold moves at a time where nobody really wanted to touch masks and casts. And she walked in and handled her business with a housing-first model. She got a lot of pushback. But you know what? Now she's pivoting. Because she's looking at what she's done and now there's, the situation still has not subsided. So now she's looking for another direction, right? And we have to be able to ebb and flow. We have to be able to try different things, but we can't get stuck, which is what the problem is right now. Is that you have two opposing views about how to handle masks and casts. And both views are not listening to each other. And I think that is the problem. And I think that that is where we need to start really thinking about how we handle this issue in a way that everyone feels like they've lost something, right? Because now there's this encampment ordinance that the mayor has filed, right? Now we're looking at other tools in the toolkit that we can use. But then the other side doesn't feel like that's a compassionate way to deal with this. But then the people who are facing, you know, there's drug trafficking, there's human trafficking, there are people who are being assaulted. I mean, like, there is a crisis there that goes beyond just addiction, right? And I think that that also has to be a part of the conversation. Now, in terms of businesses, one of the things, and I'm glad that Council Murphy filed this, because one of the things that I've been saying since I've stepped foot into that council is that the city also, and somebody needs to be accountable to these businesses. There's a pizza shop there that's owned by immigrants. Shout out to the immigrants that are here still. I don't know the Dominican guy that was here. But anyways, the pizza owners are Dominican and every single day it seems like they're repairing their window. Millions, thousands of dollars that these businesses are paying and no one is accountable for that. And so we're creating financial hardships for these businesses that are doing business there. And we're making it difficult for them to want to stay there, right? And so if we don't get a handle on this, it's just gonna get worse. And so I say this as, you know, someone who recognizes that you can't legislate, I'm going back to that, you cannot legislate people's behavior. My niece was roaming the streets of masks and casts, right? Ended up, locked up, came back out, and now she works in that space, right? So there is reform and there is hope. So what we can't do is throw away those folks. And we have to find the strike, the balance in which everyone loses. And I think that that's the hardest thing for people to do, particularly folks who have, you know, very strong opinions, to say, okay, I can, I can let go of that if you get this and I can get this if I get, you know, like, everyone's gonna lose something. And I think that that's a difficult conversation that nobody's willing to have. I'm willing to lose something if it's going to save a life. Period.
I agree with a lot of what's being said on the stage today, right now. As I mentioned, housing is a human right to me. So that's, that's the approach that I'm taking and advocating for. Housing creates stability, right? So, you know, we need to get people housed, we need to get people, and then after that, we really need to get people the services that are needed. And with those services, right, we have to talk about investments behind those services, not just advocacy. So, you know, I'm committed to that. I often say, you know, I grew up in Roxbury, so, you know, spent a lot of my time in Nubian Square, but right now currently live in Dorchester, five minutes away from masks and casts, right? I don't own a car, so I take public transit right now, right? So I'm walking and driving, taking public transit through masks and casts every day on my way to city hall or, you know, to different neighborhoods. my way to city hall or, you know, to different neighborhoods that I'm, I'm going to. So again, I think I've mentioned this a couple times tonight, but this is something, again, that is personal because it's something that I'm living, living day to day. And, you know, there's a quality, I think Council Murphy also mentioned, there's, there's community members that live in this neighborhood, right? There's kids that use Clifford Park and play football, there's kids that play baseball in these parks. And, you know, I really want to be focused on the next generation that's coming. I really want to be protective of our youth and our young people and, you know, really want to be taking a holistic approach when we're talking about mass and CAS. Looking at housing, we're looking at services and treatment, you know, we're looking at the, at the violence that's happening. There's not one solution that's going to fit it all or fix it all, I should say. But I'm really committed to working with, you know, with colleagues, with community, with different people who are impacted, again, to address, you know, the multifaceted issues that we see underground.
All right. Thank you so much. Can we just give another round of applause for our amazing candidates? Thank you. And a huge thank you to Stacy and Tang and Professor Lee at the IOC for all the help that they've done. Thank you. Thank you to the BU Dems E-Board and for student government. And now is a great time to just as long, as, stay as long as you want and hopefully mix with some of the candidates for as long as they can stay. Yeah. Thank you guys for coming.